Agenda.
Tonight's, tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code five four nine five four point two.
All right, we'll now do a silent on option if you'll join me in standing and then do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're going to have a presentation tonight. The Youth Action Council is here to do a presentation and let's welcome them as they come forward. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Um, can I put this? This escape. And then it's the first one should be, okay. Um, good evening, Mayor Turner, council members, city manager, city attorney and community members. My name is Vaishnavi. I'm Yak's vice president and this is my fourth year in Yak, which is a little crazy to say. Um, and I am also a senior at Gecca.
Good evening. My name is Adivan. I am Yak's secretary and I'm also in my fourth year in Yak and a senior at Gecca.
Hello, I'm Arjun. I'm a junior at Oakwood and this is my first year at Yak.
Um, so thank you for having us here today. We're here to talk about developmental asset number seventeen, creative activities. Youth spends three more hours per week in lessons or practice in music, theater, or other arts. Um, so we wanted to share a little bit about our stories and how engaging in such activities has helped shape our own passions and how they've served as, um, like, and how we have developed through them as individuals here today.
The complimentary asset that we chose for the month is school engagement. A young person is actively engaged in learning. We chose this asset because it's important to have a balance between the school engagement, which provides youth with the knowledge they need to succeed in future careers and creative activities, which provide opportunities for the youth to explore different things to find out what that future career could be.
So I've always loved learning. Um, for, uh, I, I love learning in what I was interested in. I, I wasn't really, uh, I didn't learn for the sake of learning, right? So, um, to me, reading is like an intellectual expedition, right? It's like, um, I could never focus in class, but when I sat in front of a book, I just became mesmerized, right? So I, I've always, I, I've always, like, it, it's always helped me to, like, it's helped me to just become an extremely well-rounded individual. And this is like the creative asset that's just very important to me.
Thank you, Arjun. I'm definitely there with you on how it's so important to learn for interest rather than because it's a requirement. Um, and not on that note, I wanted to talk about how it's so important to find balance in your day-to-day endeavors. And as a senior in high school, I've definitely learned how important that is. And as much as it is necessary to devote your time and energy to your academics, it's also much, um, more important to, um, find stuff you're interested in and things that keep you happy. Um, so creative activities serve as a source of creative outlet and a means of expression. Growing up, I was involved in all the different arts, so singing, dancing, I did all of it. Um, it's a picture of me on the right and a drawing that I did when I was, um, a couple of years back. Um, and one thing that really stood out to me was dance. I was involved in two types of dances. Um, Bollywood, which is a more North Indian style of dance, and Badanatim, which is a more classical South Indian style of dance, and I loved it. Um, growing up, I was, I only saw it as a source of entertainment, but now as I look back, I'm able to kind of realize how much it truly has helped me. Um, it kind of enforced the mindset of thinking outside the box. So if I had to learn, uh, difficult choreography, I was able to kind of like twist my brain and kind of think outside the box to kind of learn that step. Um, it also helped me, um, be more involved in the community and in my culture. I was able to meet new people and, um, kind of learn about my traditions as an Indian, um, American kind of.
Vaishnavi just shared an inspiring story about her passion for dance. And this is exactly what a creative activity is. It can be anything that a youth, a young person can devote their time to, and this be completely lost in the process of doing the activity. For me, that was a physics internship over the past summer. In this internship, I worked on developing an accelerometer and analyzing the motion of a water rocket. And I worked with my teammates to think outside of the box and apply the knowledge we learned from school to figure out ways to make our project succeed. As a child, I always dreamed of working for NASA, and this creative activity helped me get a glimpse into what that future could possibly look like.
Adivan, that's what you do for stress relaxation? I'm impressed.
Um, so Vaishnavi and Adivan are two extremely well-rounded individuals, if you, uh, come to know them. And I think creativity and the creative arts, uh, really played a part in, uh, making them who they are today. Um, so we have a, we, we found a quote by Albert Einstein, which kind of, um, expresses what we kind of, uh, what, what we came here to tell you guys about today. Um, creativity is seeing what others see and thinking what no one else ever thought. And ultimately, we, uh, creativity and innovation and discovery are important to the progression of, uh, of our society. And, um, that's kind of what we, we meant. Um, thank you. Thank you so much for having us here today.
Thank you. Vaishnavi, Adivan and Arjun, thank you so much. I always appreciate you coming and being here. Proclamations that we would like to present, uh, we have, uh, one that, uh, is present here this evening, another that is online, and then two who are not able to make it. And so I am going to, uh, the proclamation to, uh, this will be, um, Arena, who is here, uh, this is regarding Ukraine. So the twenty-fourth of February marks the one-year anniversary of Russia's illegal invasion and occupation of Ukraine. Ukrainian people have demonstrated remarkable resilience in the face of this aggression and have continued to uphold their democratic values and aspirations for a better future. City of Morgan Hill is proud to be home of a diverse community of residents from all over the world, including a vibrant and active Ukrainian community. The city of Morgan Hill stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Stand right here if you'd like to make a few comments.
Yeah. Thank you so much, um, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I'm so personally happy to see so many familiar faces here and thank you so much for having us. We also have a couple of different members from the Ukrainian community who are both residents of Morgan Hill, um, as well as the South Bay area. And on behalf of the Ukrainian National Women's League of America, on behalf of all of the Ukrainians present in this room, we are grateful to this city for your compassionate leadership. We are grateful to, yes, we are grateful to every single, um, resident of Morgan Hill for your compassionate hearts for maybe not so easy economic situations that we are all dealing with. Um, you know, every single Ukrainian standing here in this room, we are passionate about our communities living here, raising our children here. But also every single person here, our hearts and souls have been torn apart, uh, one year ago when the full-scale war started in Ukraine. If anything, Ukraine taught us is bravery. Um, Ukrainians are a brave nation, but also we need continued support, continued support for democracy and human rights. And so from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for welcoming us here.
Our hearts go out to you and we're grateful for your investments in our community. Thank you so much. Here's the proclamation.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Next proclamation, we have someone who's, uh, I believe online. Is that right, Michelle?
Yes.
And we will let them make a few comments after reading this proclamation. The city of Morgan Hill is committed to supporting the arts to inspire and prepare youth for success in the 21st century and allowing them to develop as productive contributing members of a strong society. We have a vision that residents have across, have access to high-quality arts education that is culturally relevant and inclusive in all forms as part of the comprehensive education that sparks curiosity, imagination, creativity and joy. At March, youth arts is celebrated in local schools, school districts, community arts organizations, and larger communities. And so we have, uh, Sophia online and we're going to allow her to make a few comments. And then we have this proclamation and we will have it at the city offices. You can come by anytime to pick that up.
Thank you, Mayor Turner and members of the Morgan Hill City Council for your support of arts education in our schools by presenting the Youth Arts Month proclamation tonight. I had a great, uh, the students who spoke before me really was a great lead into what I'm going to say tonight. Uh, my name is Sophia Fojas and as the Arts Coordinator of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, I lead Art Spiration, SCOE's arts initiative that began in two thousand and seven. In my role, I support districts implementing a comprehensive arts education, co-manage the Arts Ed Connect Grant to teachers with SV Creates and co-lead the Marion Sokar for Arts and Education in partnership with San Jose State. Youth Arts Month began in nineteen sixty-one by the National Art Education Association to recognize art as a critical part of a well-rounded child's education. Encouragement and commitment to the arts by students, community, communities, organizations, business, governmental agencies and individuals was the goal of this initiative. Now, in two thousand and twenty-three, research shows us the power of the arts in developing a path to creative self-expression, instilling a sense of belonging and developing perseverance through adversity. The positive effects of arts participation in school are increased attendance, high academic achievement, uh, greater confidence and higher civic engagement. We need what the arts and creativity bring now more than ever. Joy, creativity and connection for each and every child and each and every educator in our schools. On behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and as a child myself who learned the violin in the fourth grade and went on to become a music teacher in the public schools, thank you for recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in Santa Clara County.
Thank you, Sophia. Two more proclamations, this one being proclaiming March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three as Caesar Chavez Day. Morgan Hill is proud to honor Caesar Chavez, civil rights, Latino community and farm labor leader, a religious and spiritual figure, a community organizer and social entrepreneur, a champion of nonviolent social change and a crusader for the environment and consumer rights. Caesar Chavez realized his dream to help farm workers organize into an influential union and nationwide movement with help from his family and fellow activists, establishing the first credit union for farm workers as well as health clinics, healthcare centers, job training programs, housing and other essential services. The city of Morgan Hill recognizes and celebrates the contributions that Caesar Chavez and his family and friends have made to generations of our citizens through his tireless advocacy for farm workers' rights and civil rights for underrepresented people. Here's the other one. I misplaced it. Next is proclaiming the month of March, two thousand and twenty-three as Women's History Month. In nineteen eighty-seven, after being, uh, petitioned by the National Women's Historic Project, the United States Congress passed, uh, Public L one zero zero dash nine, which designate the month of March as National Women's History Month to recognize the contributions women have made to history. There are half our residents being women, many of whom are leaders, mothers and trailblazers. Women have made our Morgan Hill community a stronger, more vibrant and better place to live. Women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural and social roles in every sphere of life, constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. Women's Month commemorates the history of women's impact on the world and raises awareness of issues women are facing worldwide. All right, very good. And we are now going to move on since Councilmember Lebers is not here to make her report. We are going to now move to the city manager's report. Christina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, my teammates that are with us this evening. A few items for you today. Um, the first is the windstorm update. So yesterday's wind event, um, caused significant damage throughout the city and power outages, which some are still experiencing. Our police department responded to downed power lines throughout the city, closing roadways to ensure safety until PG&E could repair the situation. In addition to the PG&E outages, our public services, public services team responded to over forty city trees that had fallen and were forced to clear another dozen privately-owned trees that had fallen into city roadways. Additional damage occurred to signage throughout the city and as well as fences at city facilities. And so the cleanup and the repair efforts will be ongoing throughout the week. Little update on our Hale Avenue extension. Our project is progressing. DeWitt Avenue opened this week from West Dunn to Edmondson. Next item I wanted to, um, share with the community is our Morgan Hill Community Police Academy or CPA now accepting applications. And so we have a police academy that's going to get started. And this provides community members an up-close look at police work in the Morgan Hill Police Department. It's designed to inform community members about our department's policies and procedures and to foster partnerships and provide safety awareness, uh, through practical police training and education. It starts on April the third. Meetings are once a week on Wednesday nights at seven o'clock and they go to until nine thirty. You can visit our website for more information as well as the application. And so you have until Friday, March twenty-fourth to apply. And then this Saturday, we have our Bay Area Panthers hosting an event. And so you can come and meet the players, the coaches and the staff from one to four, and that's going to be hosted at our downtown amphitheater. There can be food trucks, live music, games, as well as prizes. The next item is related to our mushroom festival. Organizers of the mushroom festival are planning to hold an event this year. It will be a smaller footprint, basically utilizing the community and cultural center and its adjacent parking lot for this year's event. Our team is working with the event organizers to finalize the plans as well as the permit for the event. They're going to be closed on March thirty-first, which is in observance of Caesar Chavez Day. And then, uh, two additional items I wanted to share that on April the first, American Association of University Women is hosting the Young Women's Leaders Youth Leadership Conference. And so that's going to be at Central High School. And I was asked to sit, um, and, and basically do a panel, do a session. And so I'm really excited about that. And the Young Women's Leaders Conference is going to be workshops on leadership, women's rights, climate activism and more. And so people can go to the AAUW website to, um, to, um, sign up. And it's for girls that are sixth through twelfth grade. Honestly, I just want to call your attention to two items for which we have supplements in our consent calendar, items nine and twelve. Nine relates to our resolution and letter opposing a ballot initiative. Our supplement number two has some minor adjustment to the wording. And then item number twelve has some clarification to the minutes. And with that, I conclude my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Christina. We'll now move to the, um, city attorney's report. Mr. Larkin? I have no report tonight, Mayor. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Any my colleagues have a report? Uh, yes, Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank the women that lead with us here. So thank you to all the women who are leading the city and the wonderful job that you do in honor of Women's History Month. Um, I want to thank those who are celebrating Sesar Chavez Day. I also wanted to call out, uh, public services for their work. And then I wanted to ask for, we have a housing, community and economic development meeting coming up this week. There also was a webinar that was done on the Reno reform process and how that will be done by HCD. And ask if city on forward that too, if maybe you could share that with everybody, that would be great. Um, then finally, and also just a reminder, there's, um, some legislative priorities that have been posted to the League of Cities, uh, website and believe those were shared with all of us as well. And then for SBCE, we did, um, get a clean financial audit. So that was great on our last meeting. And we also have published our two thousand and twenty-two community impact report for the community highlighting our annual resort results. And, um, one, one thing I'd like to highlight is that we had a savings, um, last year on our region avoided over three hundred and three million pounds of greenhouse gas emissions. So, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? I have an update. I did attend the Cities Association meeting last Wednesday. There were a couple of bills that we reviewed, one being to do with Valley Water and that in both bills were related to Valley Water, but one in particular that would be of interest to us is one that, uh, Valley Water is looking to possibly build, um, uh, homeless housing along their land. Uh, and so that, uh, was discussed and reviewed by the policy committee. No recommendation was made, but it was something that we would want to maybe review as a council, uh, because at some point they are going to look for some, uh, some support on that. So that's it for me. Uh, if no one else, then we will move on to our next item. Uh, this would be public comment. This opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is not on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item, uh, to, uh, to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during the public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Uh, Michelle, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda?
I have no cards. I see no hands, um, on Zoom and I don't see anybody rushing up, so I'd say no.
Okay, very good. Well, then can I get a motion, uh, next time, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as posted?
Motion to approve.
Second, uh, motion by Councilmember Borjola, second by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Uh, next, uh, is the consent calendar. If no council member is asking to remove an item from the consent calendar, I will ask if anyone in the public wishes to do so. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
I would like to register on number five an abstain vote, number seven an abstain vote, number eight a no vote. And on, which is on the time change. And on number eleven, I would like to pull that for a moment. Thank you.
Very good. That's member spring. I'd like to be on the record. There's a no vote on number seven. Very good. Anyone else? Okay, to the public, anyone wishing to pull an item?
Yes, um, we have a member of the public with their hand up. Just a moment. Joe, you should be able to unmute.
And while, while Joe's coming, uh, confirm working is Beltran. I, I want to, did you rec, uh, abstain on item seven?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, uh, I would like to, um, make a comment on, uh, item number seven.
Go ahead.
And Michelle, um, Miguel Jimenez is on the line and would like to see this time to me.
Is that, okay, very good. You have, uh, you will have six minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Baronowski. I'm a Morgan Hill resident who agrees with several city policies that say residents, businesses and employees are entitled to a fair local government, which in turn requires a decision-making process that is independent, impartial and accountable. I have observed that when the decision-making process fails to meet those requirements, a representative democracy is nothing but an illusion and decisions are effectively put in the hands of a few people. We have been told for quite a while that parcels falling under a planned development zoning designation would be protected against a developer using some state law to build some project that would otherwise not be allowed. That was the story before the Feb fifteenth public hearing on the Gates project and is apparently still the story as it was repeated on March third during the goal-setting workshop. Seventy-two hours before the decision-making meeting started, the staff report was posted, which correctly noted that parcels associated with the Gates proposal were covered by a planned development zoning designation and quote, "The PD includes development standard guidelines and specifies the allowed uses within the PD." There was no mention of any concern that some sort of loss of local control would occur if the council decided to not approve the requested general plan and zoning changes. But as soon as some questions started being asked during the public hearing, we were told that the city didn't dump the planned development agreement already in effect. It would quote, "Absolutely become a straight housing project" or at least have the potential to become a straight housing project under state law that allows housing on commercial property," end quote. Absolutely, or at least have potential. Four members of the council picked absolutely. From that point on, the understanding that a standard, legally recognized, well-understood planned development process would be a guard against something that is not in the public interest was basically thrown out. Replacing what staff had repeatedly said were new opinions based on pure speculation about what the developer might do if the city didn't give them what they wanted. Those opinions not only had to ignore the city's predisposition on how PD would be treated with respect to state laws, but also a number of practical and obvious market considerations specific to the location and physical characteristics of that property. Now, we're all entitled to our own opinions. And if you want to take a position that a developer would decide to put up a skyscraper of affordable or low-income units on a property that has extremely limited parking, flood zone and wetland issues and obvious ingress and egress limitations, nobody can stop you. Whether a project can pencil only seems to matter when it supports a claim that without requested amendments that can easily be converted to cash, a developer won't be able to deliver some project that has a lot of support. When penciling might suggest that unwanted outcomes are unlikely to occur if the developer is not given what they wanted, it isn't even discussed. The public record shows the primary reason for approving changes that will likely reduce a long-term public benefit of the property is simply because of the land has not already been developed. An indisputable fact and an illogical reason that has been used over and over in our city to arbitrarily change land uses in the general plan and zoning code. Then, after failure to attract revenue-generating commercial uses was apparently considered a permanent condition, no matter what else changes in the city and thus that the property owners should be allowed to develop something that is easy to sell today, it was decided the best approach would not be to modify the planned development definitions, but instead to use a MOU, which is not legally binding and might not even be treated as a friendly handshake that it is in the event that the developer who ends up starting or finishing a project is someone other than City Ventures. The most apparent reason for that choice is to ensure the developer would not become subject to meeting the public benefit requirement, which is part of the current planned development process. Now, losing just another three point eight acres of commercial land, approving just forty-nine townhomes without seriously addressing the traffic impact and completely ignoring the general plan requirement to perform a fiscal impact and job analysis before approving a change in land use designation for one general type of use to another is not by itself going to cause major impacts. And it's not why I'm taking your time this evening. However, what happened during the Gates decision-making process is not unusual. Following staff recommendations that are based on subjective opinions where there often isn't even a known set of assumptions to support those opinions or worse, when knowingly false statements are used to justify a desired outcome is not rare. It's not even extraordinary for the council and the public to first learn of some fundamental claim being used to support a recommended decision only after the public hearing has started. I encourage residents to not give up expecting our local government to act in a manner where the independent, impartial and accountable decision-making process they acknowledge is necessary to provide a fair and representative system we are entitled to becomes the norm and to consider the consequences if we allow the decision-making process to effectively be left in the hands of a few people. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to pull this item and bring it back on April fifth. Is that the? Okay, so then we will, uh, since that was a comment, we didn't necessarily, or there's more? Okay, forgive me. I'm sorry. Michelle?
Um, Samantha Hauser. Can you just press the button on the mic and when you see a red light, it's live? All right, thank you. Um, good evening, council members. Um, my name is Samantha Hauser. I'm with City Ventures. Um, I'm grateful for your time tonight. Um, I did not expect to, to speak on this item for a second reading. Um, but I want to, um, relay any concerns that, um, may be causing, um, some doubt about the second reading. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, we did sign an MOU that would guarantee the commercial component of this site. There is zero chance. Um, I said it on the record, our CEO Felker said it on the record at the last meeting. And it's part of, the staff report is a signed memorandum of understanding. There is no chance that we would use state law and, or legally could with the memorandum of understanding. There is no chance that we would use state law to make this a one hundred percent housing project. There just doesn't. So again, I'm, I'm here to answer any and all of your questions. Um, I'm not sure what else to say, but I'd really love to, to make this happen.
So we're on, Mayor, if I may, um, we're, we're on, we're on consent calendar right now. Um, so there's no opportunity to ask questions.
Um, so there's no opportunity to ask questions, but I'd also strongly recommend against reopening the public hearing because then you've got to do first and second meetings again, and we don't want to go down that road. So I would suggest we go on with the consent calendar and then unless there's somebody's going to change their vote, we're looking at continuing the set in table fifth.
Yeah.
Sure. Now, I want to confirm. With Councilmember Martinez Beltran, you initially voted yes. You are now changing your vote to abstain. Okay, very good. So then we will now vote on the consent calendar. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
A motion to uh, to uh, approve?
I'll, I'll second that with the comments I made earlier.
Again, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, but what we have now is two approve, one abstained, one no on item seven.
So item, item seven failed, but because there's no quorum, it can come back at the next.
Okay, very good. So we'll bring item back, item seven back at the next council meeting. Very good. Thank you. All right, thanks so much. Uh, next, then we are going to be moving to item eighteen. This is a, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, Councilmember Martinez Beltran requested eleven be pulled.
So forgive me, Councilmember, forgive me. Uh, item eleven then, that's uh, all right.
Okay. Oh, you said eleven.
You did say eleven.
I'm sorry. Okay. The, I'm trying.
Okay. Uh, please.
Can, um, can we get a quick staff report on that, please?
Go right to further.
So Chris Gionni, Public Services Director, is going to come up and give a staff report on item number ten, which is approve the purchase of a maintenance division dump truck.
Initially, she said eleven. But she, actually, I, I understand it, thinking you meant ten.
Voted already now.
We did, oh, so we voted.
You, you did vote, yeah.
So we can say, Chris, I'm sorry, no presentation, we're moving on. You did say eleven to begin with. We voted. Consent calendar is now done. We are going to move on to the next item.
So you're saying that I can't vote no on that. I have to approve it because
You voted.
I was wrong in saying that it was
Direct.
Eleven and not ten.
Well, you voted yes. Um, you can ask for, you can make a motion for reconsideration if you made that, and if there's a second, then it can be reopened.
Okay, I'll move for reconsideration on number ten, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
One favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
The motion for reconsideration fails.
All right, we're moving on to the next item. That would be item number eighteen.
I still need a vote on item eleven because it was cold perm consent.
Forgive me. Okay, so I need a motion to um, approve item eleven.
What is item eleven?
It's the emergency operations um, plan. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Very good. No. I think we're moving on to number eighteen. Okay, very good. This is to adopt updated water capacity impact fees.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, Morgan Hill residents, teammates are here tonight. Uh, my name is Dak Green, Finance Director. The item you have tonight is for you to consider is the water capacity fees adjustment or some of the known as impact fees. The outline of the presentation night is, uh, we can touch briefly on the background as well as the capacity fee itself and talk about, about the next study and of course, the recommendation, recommendation. Background, uh, after spring, after the cultural adoption of the water rate study in the spring of two thousand twenty-two, we also retained the MBS to help us conduct the water impact fee or capacity fee study for two primary reasons. Uh, so make sure that the fees are updated to comply, to comply with the legal requirements and industry standards. Uh, for the information, the last, uh, the water impact fees last update was in two thousand and seven, so it's been, you know, over, definitely over that fifteen years. And number two is to ensure the fees are effective across the capital infrastructure needed to serve the new connections. About the capacity fees, uh, they are to impose as condition to development approval. And we use to pay for the capital facilities or infrastructure needed to serve the new development. And they may not be used to pay for maintenance or operations. The fees are governed by the Constitution, uh, case law, uh, and the government of California statutes include the mitigation fee act. The act was authorized the city as ours, uh, to establish, increase, or impose fees as a condition for approval of a development project. The fees need to be, need to have a reasonable relationship between the amount of fee and the cost of public infrastructure of cities attributable to new development. The fees cannot be used for the, can only be used for purpose with the fees who is collected. So basically, we cannot use the water impact fees for any, any, either, any other facilities or infrastructure that not relate to water. And the fees may be imposed by majority vote of the city council. Uh, about the next study, uh, the consultants, uh, use the historical position growth uh, to estimate the number of future meters needed through twenty thirty-eight. Why twenty thirty-eight? Because that's the uh, CEP projected in the uh, CEP as well as in the water master plan. Um, based on the current existing meters, we have about seventeen thousand and the projected growth, population growth rate about two percent annually. Uh, we're going to need about twenty-four or additional seven, seven two hundred meters to reach to estimate growth of about twenty-four thousand meters. Uh, equivalent to uh, about thirty percent of the uh, cost uh, attribute to new customers. And uh, the consultant concluded in the study that uh, with the existing assets and the number of costs for the uh, future planned capital projects, uh, the consultant concluded about eighty-four point six million are attributable to new development, new customers. And if you take the eighty-four thousand, uh, eighty-four point six million divided by number, uh, estimated additional bill out to twenty thirty-eight, we, we arrived at the eleven thousand six hundred eighty-two per uh, new meters. So basically, that would be the cost for a typical residential house, household between eight and one inch uh, meter. The chart here in front of you is, uh, basically show you uh, our cost currently right now and what would be if we uh, implement the uh, consultant recommended fees. So as you can see, our fees right now is considered very low. And uh, with the hundred percent limitation of the consultant recommended fees, we would move up to the uh, more than the uh, uh, more than average in the list of cities that uh, we look at. And the recommendation for tonight is for council to open and close public hearing and adopt the resolution to approve the next studies and updated fees. And uh, that concludes uh, my presentation. And um, we, uh, here have Chris Gionni and our consultants in Zoom will be answering the question that you may ask.
Any questions by the council? Councilmember Borjoli.
My speaker on, um, the, the, the fee increased uh, is um, it goes from, you know, where it is now to the next phase. And so, can, can we implement a more slower phase of increase as opposed to ramping it up in a, in, in this quick of a matter?
Yes, that, that will be up to the council discretion. Uh, but uh, staff here would not recommend uh, phasing that take more than uh, four months because they are, uh, basically, uh, this is a new cost, uh, revenue they need to basically uh, to make the infrastructure safe, safe for our uh, existing and new customers.
I, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. First of all, I want to know if I thought this was number eleven, I would probably be forced to vote something that I didn't agree with. I don't appreciate that. Second, I want to know the increases that are happening. If we were able to, let's say it was phased, there was talk about phasing it. Would we, I guess I'm trying to understand, would we be able to, would it be the full amount that would be phased? Or would it be, would it be pushed out? For example, let's say we thought we were going to capture a million dollars. And at the rate that we propose, it would take us five years. If we phase it, are we still going to capture that million dollars in five years? Or is that now going to take us ten years, fifteen, twenty years?
Um, the answer to that would be no, because uh, I would recommend, recommend, recommend it, uh, about eleven point seven, eleven thousand six hundred ninety-two. If we can phrase in than the uh, the net increase from current existing four nine hundred, then that would, I mean, that the city would capture less revenue than needed to for the build out of the system that needed in the uh, study.
One of the issues we run into, Councilmember, is that we can't each development has to pay for its fair share and we can't collect that fair share from future developments. So if we're going to collect less than the full amount of the fair share, that has to be backstopped from our general fund. We can't, we can't apply that to future developments. So, so it's, i- i- in an ideal world, it would be, we phase in over time and as we go, it gets more and more expensive until we have enough to cover the whole cost. But that means that some developer, you know, three or four years from now is subsidizing the current development and we can't, we can't legally do that under um, under the up to eighteen and, and similar measures.
The existing developer, we can't just stretch those out?
We, we, we do, and we can, and we do finance um, our fee agreement, allow financing of our fee agreements so that instead of having to pay all at once, we can finance them so they pay over time. That, that is a process that we can use. So yes, that way every development is paying its fair share, but they don't have to, it's not a one-time out-of-pocket cost and that, that's a program we have. I would typically note, I believe that we don't typically use that program for residential.
Development.
Yes.
Are we able to?
Yeah, we, we could. It's a little trickier because um, because for, for sale projects, I think for a multifamily, it would make more sense because you have the same owner who's paying over time with, with for-sale projects. It becomes more complicated and I think that's why we haven't done it. And I think we also rely on the initial revenue from the, the development that we do, the the um, financing or the, you're sorry, I'm confusing the, the fee freeze with the financing. So, yeah. But it's just more, it's not something we've typically done. We're also just note that we are at a point now where we have a lot of development coming in. And you, you as a council see that. And we need our water infrastructure to be built to support the development that's going to be coming in now. So any phasing, if we don't collect that revenue at this time and we wait to collect it, it's going to make it more difficult to build that infrastructure that we need for this development that's coming in now.
I, I understand. I, I appreciate that as well. Can you um, tell me, does it differ on the amount of fees? For example, this phasing, would that be determined by how much it is, what the fee is? Would it get a different um, timeline, like to, to, you know, if it's over or above a certain threshold, then it's a ten-year payback. If it's underneath, it's five years, or how does that work?
Just to be clear, if we phase the implementation of a fee, that change from say, for the, for the single unit of the forty-nine hundred dollars to the um, eleven-six, it would be, okay, maybe the fee increases, instead of going to eleven-six tomorrow, it goes to seven thousand uh, now, and then it goes to eleven or eight thousand and six months and then eleven thousand in a year, something like that. That's how the phasing would work and it would be the same for everyone. So as that development comes in, they pay that current fee, but then that fee is phased to go up over time versus it just changing that day. That's different than an individual financing agreement that the city attorney was talking about. Which means the fee could go up all the way right now, but in an individual agreement could be put together for that development, pay that fee over time, but we'd still get the whole fee from that.
They're still paying the eleven-nine.
Right, that's a fina- financing agreement for the development. The phasing of the fee implementation is different than that.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Councilmember.
I think, thank you so much for your point. See, I'm trying to grab my mind around this. So, so this fee only applies to new development. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But it's calculated with a mix of of those of us who already live here and, and future development. And then, then you come up with this number somehow through the study, right? That makes sense, what I'm trying to.
Yeah, if I could real quick, you talked about existing. So is it, if I may, jump in with you on that? I have a similar question.
You have to write this my.
Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah, uh. Do you, so, so how, twenty-nine point eight percent are for the new development, right? Or no, for existing? So, so how do we come up with those twenty-nine point eight percent? Where does that number come from?
The twenty-nine point eight, obviously, thirty percent is based on the uh, the existing, what we have right now, uh, meters, about seven, seventeen thousand and projected meters that we have by twenty thirty-eight.
It's just a number of readers or, or of, or is there some cost basis being calculated into it?
We, we need to uh, the council need to uh, figure out what the uh, portion of cost to be attributed to uh, new development. And to get to that percentage, they need to get the existing uh, basically existing residents and the uh, new residents um, to twenty twenty-eight. So the proportion, basically, they calculate is like um, right here, the, they have uh, my body. Oops. Okay. You see the, I mean, the number of units? Uh, the number of new units of seventy-two hundred? So the number new units of seventy-two hundred is about thirty percent of the uh, new units by twenty-three, eight of twenty-four thousand units.
Okay, that answered my question, I, I think. Uh, so it has nothing to do with, you know, if, I don't know, see probably forty years ago was much lower for some development than it was then twenty years later and so on. So we're not looking at what, what the baseline of the fee was at that point, which is, it's just a number game here, basically. A number game, meaning the number of units, not, not the fee that that was paid by those development in the past. Okay. So, so, so current, current customers will not be impacted by this, is that correct?
No, not for the impact fees.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So basically, what we're saying is this, this is being opted out by new developments.
Yes.
New, new development. Uh, new, new developments are, are really providing the revenue to expand our infrastructure for water. That's correct.
Yeah, it, it, so it's really the cost to provide that infrastructure. If we had no development, um, there'd be no impact fees to collect, but we would not need to expand our system. We would not need new reservoirs and we wouldn't need new wells because we have an adequate amount for what we have now. So all this is to fund that new infrastructure to support the new development that's here.
Okay, so these are, these are ones on, on developers for the new developments that we have coming in. All right, okay, I'm good. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, and with that, we'll take a vote. Can I get a, I'm sorry.
Hello.
It's fresh. I would, forgive me. Public comment. Do we have anybody wanting to comment on this item?
I have no speaker cards and I'm seeing no hands go up on Zoom.
Very good. Counselor, if there's no other comment?
I was going to make a motion.
You do. Motion by Councilmember Borjoli. Now, you said?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I didn't hear what the motion was.
I'm, I'm sorry. He motioned to approve.
To, to open, close public hearing.
Oh, forgive me. Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
And need a motion to open or close the public hearing.
Yeah, and that was a motion there.
Yes.
You, you don't need a motion to close the public hearing. You just see the motion on staff recommendation first.
Okay, so you had a motion on staff recommendation. Yes, second by Councilmember Spring. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. All right. Then number nineteen. Design consultant agreement with VODA Design for Butterfield Park.
Evening again, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, uh, Chris Gionni, Public Services Director. Um, these next two items are related but uh, separate items, so good. Um, there'll be some background information I provide in this report that helps with the next report, so I don't repeat everything I said. Um there'll be some background information I provide in this report that helps with the next report, so I don't repeat everything I say twice. Um so a little background, um we are talking about a design consultant agreement for Verde Design to design a portion of the Butterfield Park site. I think the council is uh familiar um with this project. But it started some time ago in two thousand seventeen. Um our parks uh trails and recreation master plan. Our pathway park trails and my Christmas plan um said we need different park spaces, different athletic fields. Different amenities and one of the areas identified was near Butterfield Overpass, that area town. We had the property there. We identified it as potential park space. And then uh we actually did hire Verde Design to do uh an initial design um for grant applications for that site. And um we failed twice on the grant applications, not because we didn't have a good grant, but um we um it was a very competitive process with. A significant um amount of uh points for the application uh awarded to disadvantaged communities. Lower income areas and and Morgan Hill, we typically struggle against statewide competitions for that. So we didn't get either of the grants. So after we didn't get the grant, the second, the grant second time around, we did a. Uh put out a request for uh letters of interest for uh partners who might be interested in partnering uh set because we had interest. Um during the grant process with people interested in partnering to develop the site. Um so. Um last year, um we got two um letters of interest, about two organizations uh to develop the site. And then uh the council said, yes, go and see if you can partner with those groups to come up with a plan. Um and council approved us negotiating with uh. The Q P I Foundation for the baseball portion and um USA BMX Foundation for a Better Ride. Um those organizations for the BMX component. So we work forward and we develop the space plan that's on the screen here. Um you'll see the baseball components on. The your right side of the screen, which is the east side and the BMX component on the west side. So the council has seen this site plan before. Said it looks like it works. So what we're asking to develop now, um and where they did this site plan development. Uh was an alteration to the the grant site design. What we're asking now is for uh to fund finishing the design for this portion of the site. Which is the city shared portion right in the middle. And um. That that portion has parking to serve both areas, um as well as parking to serve potential city amenities there, including a bathroom. Uh playground area, fitness equipment, uh picnic area. So although uh we're relying on the potential partnering with um partners to develop the other areas. Say we didn't, we didn't have either partner agreement approved. It doesn't mean we can't move forward and start developing this park site. Because even without the BMX track and the baseball field, there'd still be amenities we start developing, including potentially uh. Walking trail um around the southern property, which is south of here. Um so it could still be a usable park site for residents without the partners. Involvement. So we're recommending moving forward with this design. However, this design is also critical to move forward with our partners. Because it's going to provide a major portion of um the infrastructure to uh allow them to develop it as well. So what our recommendation is tonight is to um authorize the city manager to execute uh the consulting agreement with Verde Design. And that will allow us to uh design and bid that center portion of the project. Once the designs are complete. Um we'll obviously move forward with construction. That would come back to council. Um if potentially partner. Uh either the partner agreements don't move forward, we're gonna complete this design, but the design could be modified so we don't. We don't uh put out a bid for the whole piece, right? We could have less parking, might not need all that parking if we're not doing the other sites, so sort of things. We still move forward with a park for our community. Um and uh to fund the design. Um we need some additional dollars and we are asking the council to adopt a resolution. Um adding funds from the Park Impact Fund, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more to um fund this design. And um if this portion is approved, uh moving forward with the design, the next step would be. Um looking on the partner agreements. Obviously, one of the two partner agreements is before the council tonight and the next item, so you'd be able to. Then that, we need to finish in some environmental review. We have done some, uh we we. Environment review to additional park site, so we'd be looking at the minor changes um in the use. And we expect that would be completed um in the same timeframe, the design would be completed. Um and then um we could go out if the council approves it to construct the park space. And as I noted, we could construct the city park space with partner agreements if if that happened. So. Um that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions by the council? Council member Spring.
Uh thank you, mayor. I think thank you, Mr. Kiony, for your report. So so I just want to ma- make sure I get that right. So this design fee is just for the part that you just showed in 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 red.
Correct. Um the partners would be designing the other portions and constructing them.
So that's what, two hundred seventy thousand dollars for? It doesn't seem that complex to me when I look at it. I mean, we're talking about the restroom, parking. Uh why why is it that expensive? What am I missing?
I could tell you, it's it's everything these days. On all the projects we do, the design and the construction is just expensive. Now, this design includes the design of all the site utilities. Those are connections to uh, you know, uh water, wastewater. Um electric or uh stormwater as well. So everything, I mean, those are a big portion of why it's complicated.
Okay, so so there is, so somehow that design includes something that is not visible to me on this.
Yeah, everything underneath of it, like, it's usually half the cost of.
Design is there, right?
Yeah, so i- it's interesting, right? So we're hiring a landscape architect, but included in this, we have a underneath, working underneath them, we have a civil. We have a civil engineer, we have people doing stormwater treatment design, all those things that are necessary to um complete just a small. Um small space like this. So good thing is, this is going to be the base for what we what we build in the future, right? So like I said, even if the partner agreements didn't come through, we've put a major base in there, we've got the utilities to the site and you have to start. Start with that and we can keep growing from there and it opens up um potential fu- future um. Um opportunities as well.
So 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 based upon what I think you've seen, I goes. By those normal fees?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. They're very competitive fees and the reason is they've done the design work. They have uh geographic studies, all that information's already there. It it's it's a very competitive um uh fee.
So then at the end, wh- what is the, what will be the result of that design? Will it? If it showed how the restroom works, for example?
Yeah, yeah, it it does exactly.
And I don't want to make fun of it, but I I'm using this as an example. It doesn't sound very complicated to me.
Yeah, I could draw. So like, so to get the restroom to work, you have to have a restroom design. So you're designing the restroom. Now, even if it's a prefabricated building they put in, you have to draw the foundation and put a foundation in there. Now, from that restroom, you have. Um you have our, that maybe has power lines that is connecting over to P G N E on Monterey Road. And you're designing all that component on site, including the electrical design for all the lights, everything in here. So you have electrical engineer drying that up. You have water coming in, which will likely come from Butterfield Boulevard, which how do we get that connection here? Connected through here, over to here, including water meter. And then we have a sewer, which will come up this way and take things likely back to. Towards uh Butterfield. So they design all that. Now additionally, once we make improvements like this, we have to design um stormwater. Um treatment and stormwater runoff. So they do have a plan for storm drains, everything that goes underneath, just to take the water away. So. There's a lot of stuff you don't see just to do these these little pieces.
Okay, thank thank you. This was helpful for me to, you know, when I think of design, if I think of something I can look at and 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 and. Here, probably the most of the cautious stuff I won't see ever, right? Um. The the I and I forgot to ask the question, I think, last time we talked about, but from Butterfield, can can people turn in into that area? From either side, coming from Butterfield?
No, they would only be on a right turn in and a right turn out. Um there was a U-turn available right down here.
Okay, that thank you for clarifying that one. Uh and and that blue building there is not part of 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 the design?
Correct, that would be a potential with one of the partners.
And 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 then would also then would include, obviously, a lot of stuff we don't see, like water. Uh electricity and so on, right?
Correct. So we would plan plan for making sure we're sizing things correctly to support that.
And that's exactly where I'm heading to with my question. So it. So do that first, I mean, they do the design, do they keep in mind what's coming next and and? Design as fast as they can on the ground?
Yes. Okay, we would not want to be ripping up our parking lot or anything like that. All this for the partner sites would be planned in advance and we would also plan for. Utilities to go farther to the south too, so we'd be planning that.
Okay, if I, and if I understood you correctly, and that that the design per se actually goes beyond the red area. It might be underneath the blue area too.
Uh no, probably not. So it would likely happen, like, say, we're doing water to the facility. We would. Would potentially take water this way and it would be sized right and it would. Would go to the bathroom and then it would likely be stubbed out to the edge here so that the future connection can be made. But we don't have to. Clear up the parking.
Yes, and and that's why I'm asking these questions, because if if you don't keep in mind what's next to it. Then that design might not work and then you might have to redo another quarter million design.
Absolutely.
Uh and and that's why, that's why it's very important to me to understand what's, what's included here. Okay, I I got my answers. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anybody else? Council member Borjoli?
Uh thank you, mayor. Um um so so you need to appropriate a hundred and eighty thousand. More because we don't have enough money from the parks funds to fund. Uh the two hundred ninety six thousand?
Correct, we had only appropriated, uh we did not appropriate the the two hundred ninety thousand. We appropriated less than that. So we need the additional money to. Uh to fund the two hundred ninety, because there's not that much in the budget. There's only like a little more than half that in the budget.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's that's my questions. Thank you.
Council member Martinez Beltman.
Thank you, mayor. Um this with with. Verde Designs, was there an RFP at the beginning for the initial preliminary design work?
We didn't do an RFP in the beginning because we wouldn't have made the state, the the deadline. So we knew someone who could do it. Uh for the for the grant. So we had to, we had to move very quickly and they had been. We had passed work with us um on the downtown parks and then they were part of the Magical Bridge Project, not the lead designer, but they were uh. On the Magical Bridge Project. They did the initial concepts for both and they did RFPs for both of those projects with us and were awarded um. So both of those projects. So we, so when we had the short timeframe to get the grant design done, we went with them and made that recommendation.
Great. And why, why did we have such a short time?
Because uh we only had, uh we had to include a whole bunch of environmental review and design in a very short period of time to get shovel ready for the grant.
Okay. Okay, so they were here from the beginning, but I would love to see more, you know, as as put RFPs out for that type of work. But I understand you're saying there were some time constraints. Um how much was that initial preliminary design?
I I I don't recall. I it it did, it did go to the council, I believe. Um. I have to check. I I it was, it was before two thousand nineteen. I'm sorry, I don't remember.
That's fine. Um and then are we sharing their design with BMX or the softball partners? All in baseball, but notice I said softball.
So uh that's, I don't understand the question.
We sharing, will we at any point, I mean, it sounds like. Areas are overlapping. Will they be doing any of their design as well?
Um that uh my understanding um is. I I do not know completely on the baseball fields if they intend to use Verde for the uh BMX um group. We believe they have, USA BMX does design, they have announced design, so they will work with them, but they will likely not use Verde.
Okay. Um and then, well, you you answered this, that they did some work on the Magical Bridge, I think you said previously.
They did the initial concept directly with us through an RFP and then um they were hired as a sub to the Magical Bridge Foundation and did almost all the. CAD design work for our Magical Bridge Playground.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Michelle, any comments from the public?
I have no speaker cards in this item and I have no hands up on Zoom.
Very good. There are no other comments, then we will be looking for a motion. We can uh vote between these items on one motion. You have a motion? Motion, council member Borjoli, a second?
I'll second.
Council member Spring, all in favor? The motion, that motion passes four zero. Thank you, Chris. Do you have the number, item number twenty as well?
Okay, so I'm not gonna give you the full background on this one because you heard some of the background on the park. So um. Um what we're talking about tonight is um a partnership agreement with a Foundation for a Better Ride. Um who is partnering with USA BMX. So um the letter of interest came from both organizations. Uh initially, so I wanted to talk about what the organizations are. The Foundation for a Better Ride is a local California nonprofit. Um they are, would be the local operator of the facility. They're the ones who work with all the volunteers. Uh they're the ones who are uh managing things day to day. At the BMX facility if constructed. USA BMX is a national organization. They do sanctioning for events. They also will be supporting the design of the site. They do design. Uh they help all their member organizations provide the insurance needed. Um that we require at the city to run the uh, run the operation and uh provide ongoing support to the local operator. Um so we just looked at the site plan, gonna put another neat red box around this area. And so uh that is the area that they would design and construct completely. Um now. The uh shared area in the middle, there would be joint responsibilities between all three organizations to um maintain and. Construct that and that is in the agreement um with um USA BMX, but they would have really control of the red area and then we'd. Work together on managing the center area. So some of the um uh agreement key points. Um the the big one, because they will not be paying a fee to the city for the site. So in order to take the site without paying a fee, they're. Going to be providing a community benefit. And the community benefit, um this is what is outlined. So they will provide reduced fees. Um to all Morgan Hill residents above um what any other fees pay for practices at the track for races. Uh that fee schedule uh was provided as its attachment in the agreement, so you can see that specifically. Um to encourage um participations from females in Morgan Hill, uh the operator will provide a twenty five percent discount um on fees. To um female participants residing in Morgan Hill, um to encourage participation for uh. Um lower income um youth participants, um they will provide up to a fifty percent discount based on income level. And that um they've agreed to match the um that financial assistance program we have at the city for our recreation programs. And um the operator will provide free use on Sundays after um races to allow people to disco there without a a fee. The operator, the operator agreement um allows them to construct and operate the BMX track on the west side of the park as explained. It's a ten-year agreement. Um and the the city does have an option to terminate the agreement early, uh with repayment of costs the operator has spent. Um to develop the site. Um requires the operator to pay the city back a third of the improvement costs for the shared sections of the facility. In the middle, they would pay that over twenty years. Um so it's a one twentieth of that one-third. Per year for the length of the agreement. Um they would start paying that once they actually develop and start using the site. Um we are recommending the city uh manager be authorized to execute administer this um this agreement with the Foundation for a Better Ride. Um and we keep this private moving forward. Um, I, I will, um, I will also, also note, um, that the, um, the, uh, in the agreement, there are a significant amount of terms that protect the city, require reporting to the city. Um, and, um, help us make sure that, um, everything's going to be on the up and up as, uh, our partners operate, uh, this, uh, facility. And then I would finally notice too, you won't see construction happening tomorrow. I mentioned we need to finish the environmental review, but approving this agreement allows us to start working in partnership, um, as we move through those steps.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, tha- tha- thank you, Chris. So the whole area won't be really complete if the other side is also done, right? Do, do, do you have an update on that as well? When do you think you'll come back to us?
Um, we actually have an item on the other side in closed session tonight after the meeting.
Okay, uh, good. That's just that one. All it was clipped, like, so I'm not a mind reader. I didn't know what it was. Bear with me here. Um, nice, um, uh, i- if, uh, no, no, I have to be careful how I word it. Could, could we move forward with just that one, one side, the BMX?
Yeah, I actually approving this agreement says we're doing that.
Okay. And, and, and we still would, would do the whole middle section, even if there might not be another partner, worst case.
Yeah, I, we, we envision moving forward with that. We think it'd be a good first step for the park site in general.
And, 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 and part of the agreement is that, that this provider would, would pay back up to a third of, of the common area cost, uh, if, if there were termination of the lease.
No, they pay during the use. So if we terminate it before the twenty years, we will not get all the money back. And it's designed that way because they're, they'd be making a big investment. So it, it's, you know, really a payback over twenty years. So if it, we, if the lease is not renewed after ten years, they'd only pay half of it back, a half of that third.
Okay, I'm, where, where's the twenty year coming from?
That, that, that's how we've, that's how we've set up the payback to make it, make it fair.
Okay.
Because if they're not here for that long, it, it, it not necessarily fair that they pay.
But we, but we don't know that the total cost yet of that middle area, right? Other than the design that we just approved.
We think it's, uh, it's gonna be around a million dollars or more.
Yeah, that's probably on the lower end.
It's gonna be, I will say it's gonna be between, likely between one and two million dollars, depending on what's included.
Okay. Should I ask one more time and then three million? No, 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 I'm, I'm joking. I, I, bear with me. It's one of those days.
Uh, uh, good. So we're not asking them to pay us back for everything there. The general city park components, like a playground or a picnic area, they wouldn't pay back. But for all the shared infrastructure, parking, restrooms, lights, those things, they would, they would do that.
Yeah, I'll have a sleeper's night over there, stick a shock with the design and, and, and then everything else. There's no way we're gonna get it for seven hundred and fifty if the design is already quarter million, correct? That's where I'm coming from. Okay, that's, thank you, Chris. And I apologize. I didn't mean, I know, to, to laugh about this.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else? Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you. Um, I really, really love some of the community benefits they put in here. Thank you. Um, but I do want to ask on the, I noticed that there was, uh, notation here about the, the Sunday races after and that they could be cut short due to sunset and blah, blah, blah. I'm not really, um, I, I'm looking for where else can we get some free usage for the community? Um, besides Sunday night, uh, weekend night would be great and the morning would be great for kids to get out there and use this in their city with their tax dollars. So I'm hoping that we can get something more than that.
I, I think the operator can respond to that. I think they're very interested. This is a commitment they've made in the agreement, but are very interested to do, do it more. That's what they're, that's what they're about. They're just, it's a nonprofit. So I think they can speak to that. You can ask them directly.
Okay, great. And then if you could just outline the fees, that would be great for us.
Gonna have to pull up. Have it up, but I'm not sure a page, so.
I have in my notes eight, but I don't know.
Give it one sec, sorry. I'm still on water capacity fees. I'm almost there.
No pressure, no pressure, Chris. Look behind you. Look at all those people staring at you.
So I think what you're referring to is within Exhibits A through H, and then the fees appear in Exhibit F, standard fees and community benefit fee?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm almost there. My, uh,
Just, I'll start if that's okay. So standard race entry is twelve dollars for community, race day entry, ten dollars. Do you want us to read those or what do you, um, yeah, I'd like so that everybody knows what those are.
You did, like, so making, the operator will answer questions, but you can see they're very affordable rates for participating. So, um, I'd ask, uh, Nick, Nick Valencia to correct me if I'm wrong when he comes up and speaks. But, uh, the standard race entry is like twelve dollars an event. Uh, the Morgan Hill rate would be ten dollars an event. Um, and that's to race in a race, uh, during the event. Um, that post-race track practice that would be free to Morgan Hill residents would be five dollars for non-residents. Um, skills clinics, um, would be twenty-five dollars for, um, in general, twenty dollars for, uh, Morgan Hill residents. And then the rental fee would be instead of five dollars, four dollars. So that's that equipment rental fee. And the other financial assistance we outlined would be a percentage off.
I guess what I'm looking to understand is, are, are kids not able to just go and use the track?
No, it's not just open all the time. The BMX track is a little bit different than a track that we would build. Um, there's bigger jumps, there's a starting gate, that sort of thing. So it's, it's an organized activity. So they do have track days that you can come and participate, but there's always volunteers there for medical and, um, and monitoring the facility.
Not get a volunteer to be there so we could open it for the community so that our place.
I think that's a question the operator could do, but we can't, they, they cannot, uh, open it up and have it open twenty-four seven.
I, I understand. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You got, any other questions?
They were answered prior to the meeting.
Very good. Uh, any other, uh, comments from the public?
Do you have a speaker card from Nick Valencia?
Well, guys, uh, just want to thank everybody for your time, of course. Um, the quick question, just right off the top of our head, um, for Yvonne. Um, basically with that, what you're talking about is, uh, that what we call passive use parks. Um, the difference with the BMX racing, uh, encompassing to a pump track is those passive use parks. Um, the city would take the burden of that insurance, basically twenty-four seven versus in this scenario, USA BMX covers the insurance and they cover it for all those times that, um, it's basically programmed, structured. As Chris said, um, everybody's, uh, got all the medical training, all that stuff. And, um, basically it's in those structured times, um, the easiest way to liken it is kind of similar to like a public pool concept where you have the pools there all the time, but obviously you don't want kids to get in there at any time, just in case something were to happen. Similar scenario with the BMX track, just because it's a little bit higher, there's a little bit more risk involved versus being at a passive use facility. They're usually a bit smaller. The likelihood of an injury is a bit lower versus when you're actually racing more, more participants or their competition in general just kind of breeds a little bit more. So that's usually the big hangup. Um, if council wants to go that way, um, it is possible. Um, that'd be something that me and Chris would have to go back to try to figure out. Um, but then it would shift basically, uh, the Ernst. And the biggest part about that is it would then shift a lot of the maintenance stuff back onto the city as it would be more of a city park. So that's definitely something we could go back and talk about. We haven't explored that, um, as of yet because we've kind of just been trying to figure it out to be basically just a BMX racetrack. Um, but in addition to that, um, you had mentioned the, the Sunday riding after the track would be, uh, open and free to the city. We also have what are known as community days, open ride days. You'll see those things a lot more sporadically as we kind of try to ramp up the program and then they get consistent. Um, but in laying it down, when we're actually putting it in the draft agreement and things, we're just wanting to make sure that that Sunday one's going to be locked in for sure. That's one that we can depend on every Sunday. Once the normal racing wraps up, the community members can come out. And that works trifled because we also want the community members to come out and see it and try it. But then we do it on the heels of a normal race. That way they can see it, experience it. They see kids getting trophies and hopefully for us, they kind of get hooked on it and, and come back out as well. Um, and then I will be here. If anybody has any additional questions or anything like that, feel free. Um, and nice seeing everybody. Every time I come to council member, the faces are changing a little bit because we have been going through, uh, from last year to this year. So welcome, everybody. Um, and then, yeah, any questions? Um, and I want to also thank Chris. He's been a pleasure to work with. Um, he's quite, quite available all the time. So our schedules actually work really well together. So. But yeah, any questions, I'm here in the audience. Um, and then we also have representatives from USA BMX if we needed to get anything on a high level.
Very good. Thank you, Nick.
Did I ask questions? Thank you, Nick, for that. Um, and what time do the races usually wrap up on Sunday?
So Sunday morning, um, we run registration eleven to twelve. I would say the racing is done by about two P M.
Okay. And so how long would you anticipate that that would stay open?
Two to four P M, I would imagine. Um, and that would fluctuate fifteen, thirty minutes. The more successful that the program gets, the day will go a little bit longer, but we could always stay open just to make sure that we're doing that community benefit.
Okay. And then you talked about community days. How often does that happen?
So typically when we're first starting up, you'll see them very, very frequently just because we want to get as many people out there as possible. Um, the hard part is the volunteers getting enough volunteer staff that's not just volunteer to go out there, but CPR trained and all that fun stuff. Um, but I would say you will at least see that probably every six weeks that we do a full Saturday. And basically what that is entails is it's a Saturday morning, usually starts about nine o'clock, goes to about two or three o'clock. And it's similar to what happens on Sunday. It just has more of a focal point. Um, we make a little bit bigger of a, event out of it, um, invite different base scouts, girl scouts, things like that. Um, and really just targeted marketing and say, hey, this is a community day. We do give out, um, awards on those days, things like that. Um, we waive the fee on all the rentals. There's no fees or anything like that. So it's just a more focusing, kind of more from a marketing angle, just to get the community involved.
Okay. And could you share with us, I, I think you heard as we talked last time, I was very interested in being sure that we got all kids out there. Um, and you assured me that there were lots of females who were interested and involved. And I think you, there was some type of a, um, it was an example here from Morgan Hill.
Yeah. So if we want to embarrass her, um, Sophia, if she's in here somewhere, Sophia, if you can run up here real quick. I'm just gonna make a big hoopla out of you. So Sophia, um, also has a brother Barrett who's here as well. So Sophia, um, sorry, she's on, Sophia just qualified, uh, last week. Oh, no, you qualified at Florida or? Okay, so Sophia went to Florida two or three weeks ago. Um, Sophia is part of probably about five or ten Bay Area kids that are qualified to race for Team USA, um, that will be going to Glasgow, Scotland this year, and she's a Morgan Hill resident right from here. So.
Wow, Sophia.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. So there's about, I'd say twenty to thirty, um, community members that are just from around this area. Um, and like I said, we have been fortunate enough in South Bay that we've had a lot of younger ladies, younger girls that have really gotten into it and kind of lasted through and gotten into those early teen years. The hard part about keeping girls around is once they get into high school, people start getting comers and all the cool stuff. Um, but we started them out as young as Sophia here and then we try to just keep them on as long as we can. But I mean, she's definitely a shining example. And like I said, her brother, um, also went to, um, they qualified for Worlds last year. So they've been to France, they've got passports. So it starts locally here in Morgan Hill. And then as their parents will say, you pull out the credit card and you can go pretty much anywhere.
It's amazing what you could do with the credit card, Sophia. Okay, thank you. Um, the last thing I'll, I'll ask is if you, I would love to hear what that, what you came back with, with Chris. If you guys could talk about what that would look like if the city was able to, some nights or some days. I mean, this is for our kids. We're spending all this money for our kids. So it's not for me, it's not for any of us, it's for the kids. And I'd love to see them be able to use this as much as possible.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Councilmember, I would note, and it is in the agreement, that the city has designated hours that the city can use a track. And we've discussed that with USA BMX. Like if we said, oh, Morgan Hill Recreation is gonna do a track day. We, it is in there that we will, we, kind of goes backwards. Our insurance will have to cover the event. So it's an option we can do and it's in the agreement, but something we have to look into. So, and we have talked to, uh, Nick and USA BMX about that.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're looking into it. I mean, I get the liability and I know that it's scary, but we do have a skate park. And, you know, it's something that we need to look at and make sure we get our money's worth. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Congratulations. See you, young lady. Uh, okay, if there are no other comments.
Um, hey, can I bring back, uh, Chris Gianni? Um,
Chris, Chris is already there.
Well, Chris, in, in the, uh, off-hours and evenings, is that, is this going to be a locked facility?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're hoping to climb the fence and, uh, do some writing. If there are no other comments, do you have any other public comments?
No, Mayor.
Very good. Any other comments? Uh, we'll entertain a, a motion. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, um, move to recommend, uh, to authorize the city manager to execute and administer an operator agreement with the Foundation for a Better Ride for the construction, operation and maintenance of the BMX facility at the Betterfield Park Site.
Thank you. Second, got a second here from Councilmember Spring? File in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes four zero.
I like that, Sophia.
Very good. We're now going to move into closed session. Mr. Lock, would you please read the closed session into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. The council will be adjourned in the closed session for real property negotiations under government. Section five four nine five six point eight, property number eight one seven zero six zero, so two. This is also at the Betterfield Park Site, but a different part of it. Um, and the parties are, you know, city manager, public service director, and we're going to be discussing close end terms.
Very good. Shall we have anyone wishing to speak on the closed session?
No, Mayor.
Good. We'll now adjourn to closed session.
Yeah, you have to go to the west and it's, you're gonna be in the west. It's unlocked. If, it may be a little chilly, but it'll be quick. And there are fresh cook.